Oh, this too. Uh, also will be going out on our YouTube channel and on Facebook. And so more people that just are attendance in attendance tonight will get the opportunity to hear the answers to these questions that our candidates will give tonight. Again, we're very grateful for um, uh, Ms. Bureau being here tonight. And Mr. Baptiste being here tonight as well, too. Uh, and so I want to give both of you an opportunity uh, to just give a ninety second introduction and tell us who you are. Um, and uh, w- why you felt so led uh, to run for the school board uh, in the first place. So let's start with Mrs. Bureau. If you would please tell us who you are and why you're running for school board.
Hi, I'm currently in elevator. I'm Gabriella Bureau. And I'm running for the Orleans Parish School Board District two seat. The main motivation for me is that I'm a working hairstylist. And so I've heard from a lot of my clients who are in education and have children in the public school system about the issues that we're facing. And I've heard these stories over and over and it's gotten to a point where I really wanted to do something for them. And with the legislation that came down this past legislative session from the governor's desk, I felt an even stronger impetus to do something. And so when I saw that the district's two seat was uh, the incumbent was not running, I saw that as an opportunity to have a chance to create real change in my community. Ooh, sorry, I was running up this to the building. Um. So yes, I I'm come from an activism background and I want to really help the students who have been helped the least by our public school system currently. I want to take them up to a great standard.
Thank you so much, uh, Mrs. Bureau. We're so glad that you could be here with us tonight. Uh, Mr. Baptiste. If you would uh, introduce yourself and tell us why you felt led to run.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ronaldo R. Baptiste and I'm seeking reelection to the Orleans Parish School Board. A position I've held for the last two and a half years as an elected member, filling the unfulfilled vacancy created when someone left the office. I believe that every student deserves access to a high quality education. No matter where they live or what school they currently attend. My platform is simple. Quality schools for all students and an end to the one size fits all approach of an all charter school district in a New Orleans public schools where the majority of our students are black and brown children. I'm fighting to increase the number of district run schools in every neighborhood so that families can choose excellent public schools under the direct supervision of elected school board members like me who are held accountable to you. It's so important that we let you hear our voices tonight because you're putting your trust in us. Why put your trust in us? And when your children come to our schools, we have no voice or are not able to assist you. We need to diversify our portfolio of schools and that includes both district run and charter schools. So that no child is left behind. Of my forty eight years in uh, public education, I've spent twenty eight of those years representing families and children in New Orleans. And I think it's time for us to take or to put the public back in our public schools.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Um, let's start with you, Mrs. Bureau. Um. The question is about the duties of the school board, uh, elected official school board members. Um, as you understand it, uh, as you understand the duties of of what would be your duties as a school board member. Can you list for us maybe two of those duties that you think are the most important and most critical duties of a school board member?
So for me, one of the most critical things is attending board meetings and hearing from constituents and turning their their issues into actionable items. Um, the other thing would be uh, hiring the superintendent. That's a huge decision that the school board is in charge of, you know. Allocating um, some of our budgeting and retaining the two percent as well. Um. You know, voting on resolutions, bringing forward resolutions. That's something I definitely want to do as a school board member.
And as a follow up question, um, is there a particular duty that works to give um, oversight to the charter school system? And let me explain.
Yes, I'm sorry. I completely, I completely omitted the uh, the voting when schools, when charters are up for renewal or uh, voting to have a new retain the charter, to choose a new charter, or if the school is failing to take it over as a direct run school, which is something that I believe in. I completely omitted that. Thank you for circling back.
Yeah, very good, very good. Thank you for that answer. Mr. Baptiste. Um, as you understand it, what are two of the most important in your view duties of a school board member?
I'm gonna say the two most important uh, duties are the hiring of a superintendent and the evaluation of a superintendent to ensure that every student in every school has a qualified principal as a leader and qualified teachers standing before them who are both qualified and certified to provide the best education to our children and to do policy development, planning and implementation based upon the input from our community members who have elected us to represent their interest of their children in schools under our auspices.
Uh, so when it comes to the oversight of the charter schools, which we understand and those many of those all this call tonight, I mean, the public understands that so often we hear from um, our candidates as well as current school board members, that because the uh, charter schools are autonomous. Uh, there's little that the school board member can do uh, to have oversight of those charter schools. Uh, as a school board member, what is the uh, most significant way, I'll say, that a school board member can practice oversight of the charter schools?
And that's only when those charters come up for renewal or in danger of losing their charter because of poor performance. That's the only time that school board members have any voice at all in anything that happens at the charter school. We're completely void of any duties or responsibilities uh, other than those that are brought before the board because of actions that need to be taken because of their failing to live up to their qualifications and or recognition for when they've done outstanding work.
All right. Uh, thank you for both of those answers. Let's start with you, Mr. Baptiste. Back to you on this next question. Um, I think the public deserves and needs to know about how these schools, because you mentioned um, when they're up for renewal, when they failed, when whether they should be renewed or not, or the charter be revoked. Um, describe the rating system that takes place to do that evaluation as to whether they uh, retain their charter or whether it's it's revoked.
Those, those requirements and those expectations held by the board for the schools are crafted in a document called the CSAP, which is the Charter Schools Accountability Framework. It's a publishable document on the webpage of our school board. And that's what each chartering group is reviewed with and met with on a monthly basis by district officials. Not us, not board members, but the administration of the district to say where they are, what assistance they may need. But again, everything has to be by mutual agreement for anything that the board will do or the administration will do with those schools.
Mr. Baptiste, let me, as a follow up question, is there anything currently about that entire process of evaluation that going forward needs to change?
No, I think we've been doing a good job in the last two and a half years by being more definitive in our approach to identify and to include the chartering groups to be a part of the discussion of the criteria that's being set for the evaluation of their schools where it's not a top down approach. But everybody has had a voice and an opportunity to have that voice heard and considered before the formulation of that charter school accountability framework.
All right.
And I had the opportunity to serve in that capacity last year and the full implementation is expected this coming year.
All right. Thank you for that answer, sir. Uh, Mrs. Bureau, um, the same question. Um, Mr. Baptiste has done a, a thorough job, I think, of telling us how that process works. Is there and so I'll just follow up with that same question of is there anything about that process in your estimation uh, that that should change?
As a layperson, as a community member and a parent who would be entering the public school system, I think that it's it's pretty hard to find that information as as a member of the public and to disseminate that information. I think that should be much easier and much more accessible and should be communicated more easily. Um, and uh, the um, the, I have seen that the metrics um, have changed, that the the scoring has changed in the last couple of years. And that is hard to keep up with. Transparency of how we are changing the um, point system is important to me too as a layperson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bureau. So, so just to follow up with you, um, as a layperson, I appreciate you saying that. You're you're not coming in uh, as someone that has held this office before, uh, so you, on the other side, have found that this process and finding that information has not been uh, easily accessible. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I think navigating the entire NOLA public school system is difficult as a parent at the moment, and I really would like to see that process streamlined that. Information is readily accessible and easy to understand for normal people.
So that's something you would work hard at?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Ms. Bureau, this is Bureau, but this this question is for you. Um, can I call you Gabriella? Gabriella?
Of course.
All right. Thank you, Gabriella. Let me ask you this. Um, first to you and then to Mr. Baptiste. Um, the, the question is, can we have choice in our school system without having the charter school system? Um, and, and some people say that, that we can't, but can we have choice without charter schools?
I absolutely believe that we can. I think that some members of our community don't have choice as it stands right now. There are so many hoops that you have to jump through to get into certain top rated schools that that leaves them inaccessible to certain popular portions of the population. So not everybody is really getting a fair choice as it stands. And in the previous school system before Katrina, there were um, schools that had special enrollment. I personally went to a public magnet high school. The only um, the only requirement was that you did a tour and that you had an interest in social justice, arts or science. And that my magnet school meant so much to me. It was a foundation for my whole worldview. I really believe in schools like that. I believe in schools like NOKA and Ben Franklin. So I would like to see those institutions continue. Um, and I have seen, you know, elsewhere that they're trying new things that are not charter, that are not privatized. New York is having um, is adopting a program um, that I have looked into it called the peer system. So that's, there are new systems around the country that have not been tried. We have tried the charter school system and I believe that we've seen the results are not serving our community.
Uh, do you have any information about that program that you could share with us?
I have been learning about it recently from my friends who are teachers and I have resources, um, some links that I'm happy to share.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Mr. Baptiste, can we have choice without having the charter school system?
For the twenty eight years that I served in the New Orleans public schools prior to charter schools, we had choice. So yes, it's a philosophical point, but it's one that bears uh, explanation. We had choice when I started teaching back in nineteen seventy five. And so the choice now that we're talking about is the um, addition of charter schools as a part of a portfolio of school offerings that even enhances the choices we already had. As my, uh, not my opponent, but as my colleague here running for, my running for reelection and her running for election. Um, choices have always been there. I think that the, having gone to an all charter school where there has been no really choice because it was only one option that parents had for their children and it was a charter school. But there are different gradations of charter schools that are those that have performed very well and are have special entrance requirements. There are those that perform very well without any special entrance requirements and there are those that perform well. Um, despite not having them and there are those that are not performing very well. So my point is, choice has always been present, but it is possible to have schools um, with choice with or without charters.
Thank you for that answer, Mr. Baptiste. I want to ask simply, um, just so you know where we stand as Justice and Beyond. Uh, Justice and Beyond is not a pro charter uh, coalition of organizations by by any means. We, we, uh, and I'll just assert this that we, uh, as a coalition, um, the, the majority of us feel that this experiment of the charter school system uh, is one that has failed our children um, in, in a, in a very profound way and it, and it's not working. Um, and so I would love for you to weigh in on this, whether um, you believe that the charter school system has been beneficial or not beneficial to the children of uh, Orleans Parish. I'll start with Ms. uh, Ms. Gabriella.
I don't think it's been beneficial to the children of the system. Um, I think it's been beneficial to some private interests who have been able to take, you know, education money and, and line their pockets with it a bit. Um, I believe that every time we have uh, government contractors come in, we delude our public institutions. So, and we have seen, you know, really heartbreaking instances of children being let down by the school system. I've heard about the John F. Kennedy students who believe that they were going to graduate and then they were told that the school had really failed them by keeping track of their grades. Grade fixing scandals were going on and an entire class basically was not allowed to graduate and had to do another year. Those sit, that when things like that happen, you know, if a product fails, that's annoying. But when that product is your child's education, that's destroys, that can destroy their life. You know, this is the foundation of somebody's life. It needs to be a strong foundation. I don't believe that we're giving our children a strong foundation with the charter school system. They don't have longevity. They don't have legacy. Who these, you know, I know people who are my age and they feel very strongly about their alma maters. A lot of these children are not going to have a school to return to. They're not going to have um, an alumni, you know, event twenty years later. I'm coming up by twenty year, any, you know, class reunion for my husband. So I think that's what we've lost for these children.
So um, in short answer, uh, is it time to end the experiment of the charter school system? Uh, yes or no?
Yes, I think we at least need to pivot to a new way of doing things. It's not going to be overnight, you know, but I think we need to make a pivot.
Thank you, Gabriella. Um, Mr. Baptiste, uh, in your estimation, uh, this was started as a experiment. Um, and, and many people feel that it is not working. And, and, and your view is, has the charter school system been beneficial to our young people?
It has not been beneficial to all of our children and that's why my platform is for the provision of quality education for all children. For the children for whom have been served very well by the system, yes, charter schools have, have worked for them. But charter schools are not designed to be a fix all for all children and families and particularly children of black and brown hues. Because they require different approaches to teaching and learning and it can be found in our traditional schools. And we have greater voice as elected board members to justify and to require that this happens. Right now, the way the system is set up with Act ninety one, we have very limited ability to change anything about anything that's happening. In fact, we have no ability at all to do anything about the schools that are under the charter umbrella. But we do only have one school now, the Leah Chase School, that we can get in and make recommendations and work with our superintendent to take, uh, take the necessary steps to bring in the innovations that our children need. So no, the charter school has not served all of our children the way that public schools were designed to teach all children.
And is it, i- isn't it the case that um, most of our charter school system is filled with black and brown children? So if it has.
Our entire school district is predominantly black and brown.
Yeah, so, so case in point, it's failed nearly all of our children. Uh, who are, and, and because all of the school system is filled with black and brown children. Um, and so, but, and so, uh, my, my question is, um, my phone's ringing, so it's kind of distracting me. Uh, when we, when we, uh, so in your estimation, I asked the same question that I asked Gabriella. Um, is it time for this experiment of charter schools to end? Yes or no?
I'm gonna say it's an opportunity for us to expand our portfolio. I don't say all, just as I said, charter schools for all is not good. The abandonment of charter schools for those for whom it works and, and minimizing that option is not something that I would recommend. I would however, say that we need to put back more direct run schools into our schools so that we can create neighborhood schools where our children can thrive and learn under our auspices for the people who've been elected to represent their interest.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Um, Ms. Bureau, uh, Ms. Gabriella. Well, we, we've just mentioned direct run schools. Um, all of us know that Leah Chase is uh, the first direct run school that we've had in a very long time. Um, what do you see as the process, uh, and do you think that there should be more direct run schools? Uh, if the public, if the charter schools are not working for everybody and, and for most people it's not, most children it's not working for. Uh, do we decrease the number of charter schools and increase the number of direct run schools? Um, it would, do you, do you think that that should be the way that we should shift?
Um, I think that we should decrease the number of failing charters. We focus on those. I am mainly concerned with charter school churn. As Dr. Ronaldo Baptiste was saying, there are some charters that are doing very well and I don't want to take somebody's school that, you know, is doing well away from them as it stands. I want to see how our direct run schools do and I want to put a lot of effort and um, resources into them and make sure that they succeed. You know, I feel like a lot of times government run programs will be well funded in the beginning and then it will start to dip off and people will use that as an excuse to say, oh, it failed. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a good program, but it's really, is it being kept up? Is it being sustained? Um, so I think we need to see how time goes. Um, and I think the process of schools failing and being able to take them over in that way is the best way to do that. You know, that way we're, we're focusing on the schools that are not serving our students first.
All right. Thank you so much for that answer. Uh, Dr. Baptiste.
Question again, please. I was parking, so I was distracted.
Absolutely. Do you think that um, we should have more public schools? And what do you see as the process of changing um, charters that fail into direct run schools?
I think we should look at the number of charter schools that are currently failing and to make certain that we're optimizing the schools that we have before the termination is made to make them direct or in, or are transferring those students into other portfolio of charter schools that may be a part of the same organization that's losing that current school. I think it's one of those things where we have to balance stuff. Because if there's a school, say for example, one of our charter management organizations has three schools and three of them are elementary schools or two elementaries in one high school or one middle school. And we're closing one of the elementary schools. If that building where we're closing has enough students in it to help optimize the other elementary schools that's being underutilized, because you know that we do have a nationwide or a nationwide drop in enrollment because of a lowered birth rate. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration. It's not a, a slam dunk thing where you just go on and for each charter school that you close, you open a new uh, direct run school. I think it has to be taken into consideration about where the school is, how many are part of their, that chartering organization's portfolio. And if we have the capacity to uh, have a, open a new building with enough students to justify its use. But I do believe that for every failing charter school, after we've made those considerations, the issue should be, um, the district will open a new direct run school.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that answer. Um, for both of you then, you know, we're, we're looking at um, at, at least Justice and Beyond and many other people, uh, many other uh, organizations and coalitions would love to see more direct run schools in the next, say, three to five years. Um, so if you were to put a, a number on that, i- if that's a fair enough question. Uh, in the next three to five years, how many, how many more direct run schools other than Leah Chase? Would you like to see uh, in Orleans Parish? Uh, Gabriella?
Um, I believe that there are about twelve or thirteen failing schools coming up, you know, for their, for their charter renewal and I mean, I, as I've said before, I'm a layperson, so I'm not the expert. I listen to the experts. That's what I, I do. I try and take in as much information as I can, disseminate it and make a decision based off my moral judgments. That's, that's where I'm coming from as like a harm reduction activist point of view. So I want to do the most amount of good, you know, as I can, but I know that there are systems that I'm up against. So what I'm trying to say is that as much as possible, you know, we have these twelve, thirteen schools coming up. It's gonna take a lot of work that I want to make sure that if we start a direct run school that it will be successful. I don't want to just say, okay, we'll just start all these schools. And, you know, pardon my French, half ass it. I want to make sure that we put a lot of energy and resources into our direct run schools. So as much as possible.
Okay, great, great answer. Thank you for that. Gabriella, Dr. Baptiste, Dr. Baptiste. Um, in the next three to five years, what, how many, uh, as we look to transform uh, our, our school system and having more direct run schools in, in, in. Your vision, how many more?
Okay, I, I'm gonna agree with my, uh, my colleague here that as many as are feasible. Because even though there are thirteen that are up for renewal, each of those schools is not a failing school. So we have to look at what we're being dealt in terms of what their performance scores are. So I'm, I, I, it's not feasible as an educator to be able to say in the next three to five years, how many more direct run schools I would have to, I, I would like to see in place. Because there are some circumstances and variables that will dictate how many there will be. But I, I would agree with uh, Gabriella that as many as are feasible after all the other variables have been considered.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um. This for, for next question, uh, we'll begin uh, with you, Dr. Baptiste. Um, many people are concerned that as we look at the charter school system, obviously uh, there is an evaluation and uh, that takes place to get a passing grade or, or, uh, you know, after the evaluation is done, that the school doesn't pass. And, and, and a lot of that is based upon test taking, test taking that uh, leads to the teacher simply teaching the test and not teaching uh, critical, um, just uh, uh, an, an analysis and and critical thinking that needs to take place really for the student to be successful uh, in, in future um, education and, and, and to, to just go to the next level. Uh, and so there's many people who think that uh, the, the, the curriculum needs to change so that our students are taught differently. However, the concern is that because of the lack of autonomy or because of the autonomy that the charter schools have, um, the school board really cannot uh, change the uh, curriculum. Is there, do you feel that the curriculum does need to change in order to uh, teach children in a way that they um, have critical thinking and not simply have teachers teaching the test? And does the school board have any power to be able to do that?
No, the school board does not have any power to uh, to, to say that they're not going to honor the tests that have been identified because the monies that we get to operate our schools in large measure come from federal and state sources that dictate to us what the student's performance has to be. Now, what happens in those classrooms and what happens in those buildings is at the hands of the uh, well, and for example, for the charter schools, they have carte blanche. They can do whatever they want in terms of doing with their curriculum. But when you're accepting state and federal monies, there are performance indicators that have to be met. And of course, the educators, the superintendent and the principals and the teachers have to come to grips in terms of what's the best or the appropriate practices to be able to address those needs. That you identify a problem about teachers being burned out on teaching to the test. They're trying to salvage and to save their schools and their jobs. Because if they don't perform, they go.
Yeah, right.
But I need you to be, but I just need you to look at that from a balanced perspective. And I'm speaking to you with forty eight years of public school administration, I mean, experience. Uh, the last ten of which were spent as superintendent of schools in a very large uh, school district serving black and brown children.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Baptiste. Uh, Gabriella, do you have a um, a response to that?
Yes, um, as Dr. Baptiste said, you know, we have basically twofold. There's state and federal, you know, edu- education laws that we must follow as far as testing. And then within the charter school system, we've lost autonomy about how our schools are run. Um, so even if we had direct run schools, there would still be that buffer of the state and federal requirements. I ultimately, I really believe that we need to change the way that we're teaching. Um, it is super important to have critical thinking skills, especially in the modern world that we're facing, you know. We are seeing AI coming into play. It's hard to tell what's real. We need to teach for the twenty first century. If we teach the things that I was learning when I was growing up, it's gonna be completely, you know, obsolete in year, in a few years. So I think we need to definitely be teaching critical thinking skills and I really believe in a holistic education approach. Um, if we're just seeing children from, from their scholastic perspective, you know, we're not gonna get the whole picture.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Gabriella. Gabriella, I'm gonna start with you on this next question. Um, and it's certainly for both of you, uh, you and Dr. Baptiste. We are seeing um a, a, a mass exodus of teachers from the profession as well as a lack of, of people going into the profession in general. Uh, what do we, what does the school board need to do uh or can do uh in order to make sure that we attract the teachers to, to be teachers and that we retain the teachers that we already have?
So um, this is, this is actually a global and societal problem that we're facing. Uh, this past Saturday was World Teacher Day, which is a UNESCO, UN um sponsored event. And I read their statement on global teaching and it was, it was pretty dire. They said, as a, as a whole community, as a society, we are not valuing our teachers that all across the world. That teacher, that the profession is in its decline. Teachers across the world are not being paid what they should be. And we are not respecting teachers. So I think one, the first thing that I could do as a school board member is address pay. At, at any moment that I'm able to, I want to make sure that our educators are paid a living wage. Um, and I think that that will help, you know, attract people to the, that's, you know, if you can't survive teaching, people are not going to come to the profession. It's a difficult job. We need to make sure that people's base needs are met. And then beyond that, I think teachers need to have more autonomy in their classrooms. I feel like there's a lack of respect for their education and their skill set that a lot of people think that they know better than teachers. And they're dealing with so many things. So I really, it's, it's a super difficult multifaceted problem. Um, but I think it's something that we can address aspects of, but it's a global issue. And I want to see our teachers highly respected and highly paid.
Thank you, Gabriella. Dr. Baptiste, same question.
Yes, from the school board's perspective, there's one thing that I think that exceeds or supersedes the provision of pay. I think we have to support our teachers and that's, that is supported by the plethora of research that's out there that says teachers will stay in a job if they feel supported, wanted and needed first over salaries. Salaries certainly do play an important part in it. And I would certainly do in my, what's in my power too, with the budgetary uh constraints under which we live. And if there are monies that are identified, I would certainly want to see our teachers remunerated with uh increments in pay every year versus whenever they, you know, windfalls happen and they get it or they get stipends from the state.
All right, very good. Uh, thank you for that answer. This is the last question. Uh, and before I open it up to see if there's anybody in attendance that has any questions. Um, and so as a school board member, uh, you have um access uh to the, the budget for the whole portfolio of these charter school systems. Um, a- and obviously, so you can critique it and, and, and do whatever the school board needs to do with it. Um, how do you, how would you utilize this information of, of being uh shown the budget for these charter school systems? And um, yeah, why is that important to be able to have access to that budget? I'll start with you, Gabriella.
Um, I mean, I think it's incredibly important to have transparence, transparency in our government functioning's um budget is, you know, having seen the budget of the CMOs is very important because as individuals in the community, I think we've I mean, I've seen a lot of instances of impropriety and I, it, it maddens me. And so if I had access to those budgets, I would really check, you know, check line by line, certain, at certain things because I know certain things are, um, how do I say? I, I'm trying to find the good wording for this. My husband was in the Navy and he worked as a government contractor afterwards. And he has seen how government contractors will fudge the numbers. They'll find little things, you know, to pad the budget and things like that. Um, so I would really, I, I really want to take a lot of scrutiny to these CMO's budgets.
All right. Appreciate that answer. Dr. Baptiste.
Yes, just like our school district, um, our all school districts in Louisiana have to, are required to pass a budget and submit their audits to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor. Um, I think that looking at other charter schools' budgets is as much as we can do. There's nothing that we can do to recommend to them or do to their budgets or withhold from them or give them incentive to do because they are their own LEAs.
And so
That's the truth of the matter.
So if, if something is, and when you, when you, when you, as, as Gabriella put it, when you scrutinize the budget and go through it line by line and those, there are just glaring expenditures or even the lack of expenditures uh to give our students the best education. Uh, for example, if a charter school um is showing just a, a real deficiency in what it spends towards its lunch program um and could be doing so much more. Uh, would you utilize your seat as a school board member to call them out on that?
No, we don't have authority. We are not the administration. We're the board. We do policy development. We do not get on the dance floor. We are in the balcony. That would be an administrative issue, if at all, that needs to be addressed through the level or the office of the superintendent of schools.
Okay, so to make clear, it really does no good for a school board member to have access to that budget.
No, it doesn't. Because the only one that we're responsible for is the school that's under our authority. That's the only one that we can do anything about.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that answer. All right, uh, let me see then, uh, we just have uh maybe about five more minutes with you all. So let me see if we have any other questions from uh anybody in participation uh tonight on this Zoom. Valerie, do you see anybody?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Ms.
Okay, yes, I'm a grandmother of one of the charter school students. And uh, I find that he's been there since pre-K. Now he's in fourth grade. And uh, every time uh I have any type of situation where I'm addressing the uh poor curriculum that they're, they're children in, not having textbooks, they, they use autonomy to uh, at their own expense to, to, to uh, to oppose what I'm saying and they do things like take me off class, dojo. Uh, not allow me to, to, to visit the school and in his class for his birthday. Uh, so autonomy is supposed to be for a positive uh situation. It's supposed to make things better, not worse. And they're using autonomy for corruption and deception. As a matter of fact, I got a chance to go volunteering there and I watched them, the third grade children. None of them there, then most of them cannot read and the teacher had to read uh the thing that, that was on the screen, the, the, the information, the books, you're not books, but the screen had the stories. And the kids couldn't read. So when I get the leave test score back, not eighty-five percent of the kids cannot read in that class. Ninety-seven percent can't do the math. And then science is, is all of them are in a poor little area. You put no grading area for, for leave. So I tried to address that with them about the benchmarks and how my, my grandson came to work on this level because of that. And he's so bored in the classroom because they can't, the children can't uh work on the fourth grade level. And that school has been in, in jeopardy of losing uh their charter. But y'all keep giving them a chance to redo it over and over again. And they failed in the children and it's full of nevotism.
It's burned down. I need you to get to a question, please.
Excuse me?
What, what's your?
My question is, how do I handle when they use autonomy against me?
So, so obviously, Ms. Bureau, uh, uh, Ms. Bernadette is a frustrated grandmother. Uh, and, and she consistently hears from the school board that they have no autonomy.
Right now, which school board is she hearing from? Because it doesn't come to us. It doesn't come to the Orleans Parish School Board. Each charter school has its own board. They only come to us for the designated purposes.
I've been to both boards. I talked to Leah.
My point is, right, but my point is, we don't have jurisdiction over the day-to-day operations of the charter schools. That's the local board that governs those schools.
And, and I'm about to meet with them when they have a board meeting, but, but, but this is the deal. They just passed another act, the governor, where the schools are in, um, you know, uh, non-compliance. Y'all could take some, you know, the scores are low. Y'all could take some of their autonomy from the board. You know about that act?
Miss, no.
Well, yeah.
No, I don't.
It's on Utnus website.
On who's up, on who's website?
Utnus, uh, Dave, Ted, Ted, Ted with me.
Uh, no.
Yeah, so I'll present that to y'all because I'm definitely gonna present the, the whole situation at the board meeting, board board meeting. Um, so why do they use autonomy? You know, y'all, I'm doing that, they doing that, that they're using it for their benefit.
Thank you, Ms. Bernadette. Ms. Gabriella, Gabriella, do you have any response?
Um, I just want to say, you know, I, I am a hairstylist, so I am used to giving people what they want. And if they, I don't give them what they want, they get mad at me. So, you know, as a board member, I welcome people giving me their input. If I hear stories like that, I'm gonna try and do something, you know. I, I, it pains me to see people suffering, so I will do whatever I can. If you tell me your story, something's going on personally for you. I want to help you. Um, so I, you know, there is a level of what can I do as a school board member? But in my personal life, I'm an activist and I'm a very caring person. So please speak to me. Tell me what's going on and I will do what I can in my powers to achieve what you need.
Thank you, Gabriella.
Hey, how y'all doing?
Uh, hold on, hold on, please, sir. Dr. Baptiste, did you have anything else to add?
I, I, I was the first one to opine on that question.
Very good. All right, very good. Uh, another question.
Question by Ms. Jackie. She want to know the, anyone of the candidates speak on art education in the schools?
Well, I can if you want me to. This is Dr. Jones. And I apologize for coming on late. I've, I've, I've been at one forum and I'm on my way to another. I did send y'all some questions and so y'all could get them today. Because I never received this information prior to Friday, but I did answer the question and I did submit them in. But I'm now en route to another forum.
Uh, we understand.
Now I'm actually driving.
Yeah, thank you, sir. We understand. Uh, the other two uh candidates are also on their way. We appreciate you popping in. Uh, what, uh, Dr. Baptiste, this one is for you, Dr. Baptiste, and I realize y'all are on your, in transition. What is um your pers- your, your, um, your view on arts uh in the schools? Um, you know, a, a lot of people think that we're, we're lacking uh arts in the schools right now and that there needs some of them.
I think arts is an integral part of any school curriculum. In all of the years that I served as a principal, associate superintendent and superintendent, whenever there were things that needed to be cut from the budget, one of the first items, people would say, well, let the arts and the encore things go. I said, absolutely not. Art is as integral to a curriculum as reading is to a curriculum. So yes, I'm all in favor of the arts.
Okay. And then, Dr. Jones?
I'm definitely in favor of the art. I am an artist. I've played, I've played, my, my scholarship to SUNY University was because of Bang. Marching band, played one of the greatest bands ever. Art is the integral part of, of how our children are able to structure and, and be able to con- contain themselves in there. I was an artist. It kept my behavior down. But Dr. Baptiste is right. The first thing they want to cut is, is art. When Dr. Holmes would say that's the first thing they attempted to cut when he was the superintendent. When Alphonse Davis came, he started, allowed me to start what they called the Orleans, New Orleans Public Superintendent's All-Star Band. And they had art programs, they had violin programs. I mean, I, I, it, it's essential. We take that away, we, we've lost everything. Art, art is, is the, the focal point of how our, our children actually survive in, in, in New Orleans. I mean, we the mega culture of festivals with music and, and, and food. So they should never cut that, never.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Uh, uh, Ms. Bureau.
Yes, a hundred percent same. I agree. Um, you know, arts is so important to New Orleans. New Orleans, that's what put New Orleans on the map is its people and its amazing artists. I've traveled around the world and I went to Japan last year and I, they were like, where are you from? I'm like, New Orleans. They're like, oh, jazz music, you know, Louis Armstrong. Everyone knows New Orleans around the world because of its art. And we need to keep creating great artists uh from New Orleans and of the next generations. Like people are saying, art is a safe place for children. I didn't have a great time in school, but I loved fine arts. I loved my art classes. And that's what kept me going to school when I didn't feel like going to school.
I understand all of that. What do you plan to do as a, a member of the school board? Do you have any plans to put forward or to uh, to uh get your other school board members to do something that would bring arts education back into the curriculum? I, you know, loving it is one thing, but working to put it back in the school curriculum is
I would, I would absolutely do it, whatever kind of work I can, because it is, it is vital to our children that they experience art education. So whenever I'm, have that towards me, you know, I will do what I can to preserve and enhance arts education in New Orleans.
Let me say this, uh, and I appreciate that question, uh, Jackie. Uh, I'm gonna toss it back to Mr. Baptiste without, Dr. Baptiste, without saying that the school board uh does not have any uh, uh, power to be able to make sure there's arts in the school. What can you do, sir, to make?
All I can do is to advocate that to the superintendent. And the superintendent operates on a majority directive from a board, just as we got the superintendent who originally opposed opening up a charter school, I mean, and opening up a direct run school at Leah Chase. Uh, other board, Mrs. Eames and I were able to work across the board and to get our board members to give a directive for a direct run school. So that's the level of influence that I have. I can't do anything unilaterally, but I can work with my board members to ensure that a directive will be given to the superintendent in terms of what it is that we want to see as a part of our budget.
Same question. Uh, Dr. Jones, what would you do?
Well, I, I echo, I echo what Dr. Baptiste says. In addition to that, we have one, we have one uh school right now. And it's, it's, and, and I think we should look at how we can actually implement art in that school, which is Leah Chase. Uh, that we can model, uh, fund that program if the budget allows, ask the superintendent to add that program in there. We only have one school, so we can look at that one school and, and attempt to implement just that one uh, that at this moment. And then as it grows, we can start looking at how we can fund. But I think we, that may be resources in the district right now to fund an art program with the one school we have right now, which is Lit, which is Lit Chase.
Couldn't agree more.
Under a district run school.
Yeah, that school needs the best art program around because it is a model.
Yes.
So, uh, I know y'all gotta go and so we're gonna leave it there. That's all the questions that we could take from our participants. Because y'all gotta go to another meeting. We want to respect your time. We appreciate your time. And uh, in closing remarks, Dr. Baptiste, what do you want to leave us with? Dr. Baptiste?
Pass man and man, uh, because this is a very important question there. Brooke, uh, Ms. Brooke, I want to ask. In their closing remark, can they uh make a statement or their opinion on do black and brown children need to have a different kind of education? And your closing remark, can you uh answer that question, please?
Dr. Baptiste, closing remarks?
I think he's gone.
Okay, he's gone. Uh, Dr. Jones, go ahead.
Can you answer that question again as I'm, as I'm taking stuff out of the car?
Any closing remarks that you might have? And um, the question that somebody also had was do black and brown children need to have a different kind of education? I'm not sure if that's exactly.
I'm not, I'm not sure about the entire question, but, but I, I, I would say I support making sure that we have adequate resources for both black and brown children, making sure that at Little Chase, that those kids are getting the necessary resources that are required for them to provide, I mean, to function properly, receiving the proper uh resources that will enhance their educational experience in that building. Uh, and moving forward, looking at policies that we can write at, at the district level uh to implement that so they, so that our kids can receive, those, those black and brown children can receive those, those resources.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. We know you gotta go, so uh wishing you all the best as you continue to campaign. Um, thanks for being here with us tonight.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Gabriella?
Hi, sorry, that's a, a little, um.
Any final closing thoughts?
You're muted.
You're muted again.
Thank you so much for having me. Um, I am running this campaign as a grassroots effort to be the change that I want to see. If anybody wants to get involved in local politics and wants my help, please reach out to me. I want to see community come together and create the government that we want. Um, and I do believe that black and brown children need a special voice, not because, you know, it's some kind of mark against them, but because we need to view children as holistic beings. Your cultural identity and race is part of that. And so our education needs to be holistic and take all of those aspects into account. Thank you so much for having me here.
Gabriella, thank you so much for being here with us tonight. We know your time is important and we're so grateful. And uh, we wish, wish you the best as you continue to campaign. Thank you for sharing with us tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Bye bye. All right, everybody. Uh, thank y'all, uh, each of you for being here tonight for this important conversation. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and just close it up, uh, for tonight, unless there's any final comments that anybody wants to make. Um, or any, uh, any announcements too?
Yeah, I have a, this is Betty and I have a comment. I really appreciate all of them showing up. We invited all the candidates. Um, and uh, Ms. Griffin, who's running against uh, Mr. Baptiste, never responded to emails nor calls. Uh, the other thing is Tucker, uh, Chan Tucker was supposed to come and in the last minute told us he was not available. Uh, I really appreciate the two candidates who spent the evening with us. It was very, I appreciate it. What I wanted to say though is I have a request for Justice and Beyond and people on this call who are interested in this education issue. Uh, we've talked about continuing the conversation about where we are with the charters. And a couple of weeks ago, Val Jefferson attended an NAACP meeting. And heard a wonderful conversation by a man who works for the Federal Department of Education Civil Rights. And I'm curious as to how the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Education sees our charter system. Because obviously we are failing children and we're failing the back, black and brown children. And it's just beyond me that. I don't think we had a choice before Katrina. I did not wanna say that to, to Dr. Baptiste. My children were privileged. They went to Lusher. Not every child had that option. We didn't have, there wasn't any choice before.
Right.
So anyway, I, I really hope that Justice and Beyond can continue this conversation and if y'all are interested in it. Let us know. I think everybody knows how to get in touch with one of us because it's. If we don't come together around this, we are gonna keep having this insane system. That we had, uh, you know, anyway, I'm sorry, but that's a request and some comments. Thank you for doing this, though.
Yeah, any, any follow-up to, to what Betty just said? I mean, you know, this is gonna take some action to really.
Yes.
Reversed.
I'm definitely interested in meeting with y'all and uh, Pastor Manning, I have been going through a lot. There are so many things I could tell y'all and, and discuss. And I'm all over the place because there's so much that they've been, that I've been through with this system since my grandson been in first grade. And uh, I'm ready and we need a coalition for change and I'm ready to get on board and do whatever we have to do.
Thank you, Ms. Bernadette.
Yeah, and I have, I have paperwork, I have notes, I have uh, a timeline of everything. I spoke to so many people that's in charge. That's just ignoring it. And it's just not right to the children. And my grandson is in a school where he can't even work on the fourth grade level. Because the other kids are not on level. And it's, it's, it's frustrating because his mama don't see the, they have the same vision we have for him. And she have, yeah, so, but I, I wanna join that for the other kids too. So we need to come together.
You're right. We cannot afford another twenty years of going, going through this.
We can't even go another five. Give them five years is too much.
ZK has her hand up.
Yes.
For a while.
Yes, hi, um, I'm just gonna say I am in ZK from um, representing vote and voters organized to educate. Um, I wanted just listening, it had a really good conversation going on. I want to thank the candidates also for showing up. Um, just showing up late in the evening. We know a lot of um, forums is happening at this time. But when um, my sister was speaking about the candidates, I was thinking that I was the only person. One of the reasons I really wanted to jump on is because of the lack of communication I've been receiving from Katrina and, you know. And I was just puzzled because I was like, maybe, I don't know, I was thinking all kind of things in my head. The school board, um, this race is very important. When we talk about our children, I'm very passionate about it. And just never could get a response and that was just puzzling and mind-bothering. But um, one of our candidates to um, participate in the, on, in this race and no one seems to be able to get in touch with them. So um, I just wanted to speak out on that and see is there, what is the problem? Is there a problem? And why we came here from the candidate, um, you know, what they stand on and their beliefs and, you know, that was just, that was.
You're, you're talking about that particular candidate that we invited that, that didn't show up and. Uh, and, and, and others too, but one in particular, we, we really don't see much of show up at any forum, so.
Okay.
Maybe a letter needs to be written and say, look, we don't even see you showing up anywhere.
Anyway.
That's not right. Uh, the people need to hear from you if you, if you even wanna entertain at all or, or expect to. To, to have an opportunity to gain this position. It's just, it's not right.
Yes.
All right, thank you for being here.
And I just wanted to add to that, but thank you candidates. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I enjoyed it too as well, Pastor Manning, took really good notes. Thank you.
Good. I'm glad you were here tonight. Anybody else?
We have Mr. Sorry, sorry, Noah.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Yes, we have Mr. Sweet.
Hello, does anybody remember, um, I think, uh, whoever just Betty said you was now. Vi- Valerie too, some meeting with the NAACP. Do y'all remember when they were here years ago? Whatever happened with that finding that they. That they were doing? What, what, does anybody remember? It was a couple of years ago, if not five.
About the experiment, about it been an, about it been an experiment?
Yeah, the NAACP came and they were doing listening sessions all around the country and they just happened to come here. Uh, they just happened to come to uh, to New Orleans was one of their stops.
What was the outcome of that?
That's what I'm asking. What was the outcome of that?
Anybody know?
What was the question they were asking, Raymond?
Raymond, what I can, I can request, I can request it and I can send it to uh, filler and also send it to you what I request.
Okay. Yeah.
Follow up on the study that you did on education specifically in New Orleans.
Okay, yeah, they were doing a listening session a few years back and uh. And I don't know whatever came of it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Raymond.
Uh, thank you, Raymond. Anything else, Valerie? Anybody else you see?
I have an announcement.
Okay, uh, now, go ahead, Brooke.
Um, next week, we're doing a really special, um, in, in honor of Non-Columbus Day. We're doing a wonderful um, session on, on, with Native Americans or natives. Who live in, around New Orleans and they'll come, several of them will come and, and speak on. On all sorts of things, on rights, on reparations, on all the things that are, are primary issues in their communities right now.
All right, very good. Let's uh, let, let's uh, show up and listen and learn and how, see how we can get engaged. Uh, anybody, any other announcements?
Yes, uh, I put an announcement in the chat. Everybody is invited. There's some, our organization is a, a, a group of organizations joining together. Um, for a political education forum would be held at Broadmoor Church, uh, that's Pastor Manning Church, uh, on Broadmoor. It will be on October the fourteenth at six P M. Our guest moderator will be the representative of the leadership board. The topics will be the three amendments on the um, on the balance in New Orleans. Also, uh, project uh, twenty twenty-five and voting laws. Uh, no, the theme is know before you vote. So we asking everybody to please come. This will be at six P M, October the fourteenth. At Broadmoor's Church. Thank you.
Is that a Monday, Val?
Yes, a Monday.
That's the same night as our forum on the indigenous.
Yes, exactly.
Louisiana community.
Well, yeah, as y'all get done and we get done with that, I'll be going from my office right into the fellowship hall to be with Val and her group.
I'll be right there. I'll be right there.
All right, everybody. Any other announcements?
Yes, I wanna also share that um, we will be having our early votes on the nineteenth, just collaborating with the other arts. Um, going to City Hall, just encouraging our folks to early vote. I know a lot of folks is doing that. But we'll be picnic, like a picnic at the park, but we'll be on the City Hall grounds. Um, and we're doing a, a lot of other events as it relates to um, early voting in our district, so in a different district. Also, we'll be doing a school board forum and that will be on the sixteenth at vote. So if these folks wanna ask more questions, get to see those candidates face to face, um, they could join us at vote on the sixteenth for six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Uh, any other announcements before we close?
We also have an event gonna be at um, a Wednesday gonna be at Dillas at six o'clock. Um, uh, P M, sponsored by the NAACP. It's about uh, communicating with our organizations. And what we're gonna do for pushing out our early voting as well as getting people to register. Most important, getting people to the, uh, post to vote. So it's gonna be at Dillas at six o'clock. Uh, the host will be, the host organization is the NAACP of New Orleans.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other announcements? All right, everybody, hearing none. Um. Ernest Johnson just popped in my office. Uh, anyway, uh, hearing no other announcements, um, we're gonna conclude with a word of prayer. Continuing to lift up all those in the path of the storm. Uh, please remember me in prayer as I'll be leaving at four o'clock tomorrow morning to head to Asheville, North Carolina. Uh, to do some disaster response. Uh, and so, um, uh, let's just, uh, just ask God for. Um, the sparing of lives and uh, at, at this moment. Oh, God, we come before you, God, and we, we, we know. That there's so much happening in the world. We, we know, he, God, that the tropics are active. And God, we, we've never been this way before. There are, there is so many people that are suffering right now. So God, we just greater sense of compassion, a greater sense of care, that God, for anything to serve our fellow man, our brother or sister, God, show us that. God, we know that people have come to our rescue and that in the time of the storm, God, help us to be able to do what we can, God. God, for now, for those who are in the pathway of Hurricane Milton, God, show up in such a way that after the storm has passed. Uh, what could have happened will not have happened, that it will be better than what is being predicted, God. Spare lives. Uh, spare people from, from, from danger, God, and allow recovery to happen swiftly and for them to have all that they need. Uh, we thank you, God, um, uh, just uh, for working miracles even in the midst of, 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 of a dangerous storm. Uh, we ask this all in the name of Almighty God and my Savior Jesus. Amen.
Amen, amen.
God bless you, everybody.
Safe travels, Pastor Manning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, team.
All right.
Thank you, ZK.
Bye bye.